Welcome, everyone. The meeting of the City Council is hereby called order of November 12th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero.
Here.
Alderwoman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos.
Present.
Alderman Denal.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Tolliver.
Here.
Alderwoman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderwoman Bade.
Here.
Alderman Lash.
Present.
Alderman Warman.
Here.
Mayor Urban is absent.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of a Sergeant at Arms for this meeting, but moved by Alderwoman Smith, seconded by Alderman Franco? Please call the roll. Oh, by voice vote, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Pledge of allegiance. You have someone to lead it for us?
Yeah, definitely.
I'm sure.
Good evening.
Please all stand.
Mayor Protim and City Council, as we finish celebrating Diwali, each year we celebrate Seva Diwali, and we'll talk a little bit more about that than just conclude it yesterday. So tonight, we have representation from the organizations that sponsor Seva Diwali to lead us in the pledge and the invocation. Leading us in the pledge tonight is sophomore Matia Valley High School, Aditi Puntam Vikar.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Leading us in our invocation is Aurora resident and educator, Vinaya Dandikar.
Shubham Karoti Kalyanam, Aarokhyam Dhanasampada, Shatru Budhi Vinashaya, Deepa Jyoti Namostute. Meaning, namaste, may the light bring auspiciousness, health, wealth, and prosperity. Salutations to the Lamb. Natvaham Kamaye Rajyam, Nasvargam Na Punarbhavam, Kamaye Dukhataptanam, Praaninam Arthinashanam. Meaning, hey, Bhagavan, more than fulfilling my desires, give me the power to serve and reduce the miseries of the tormented. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti.
Thank you.
Please be seated. Okay, the mayor's office of community affairs, are there any presentations, Clayton?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I know there's a big poster blocking out a few of you. We're going to remove that in just a minute, but that's for our award-winning student that we have here tonight. I know many of you are golf enthusiasts. Some of you even consider yourself golf experts. There you go, Alderwoman. But do you know that in Aurora, the IHSA Class II-A state champion for two years running, 2023 and 2024, is right here, Marmion Academy, the state champion, Regan Conan. Applause, brother. Before we bring down the Alderman to present Regan with his gifts, he's a two-time IHSA II-A state golf champion. His 2024 high school scoring average is 69.4. He was a medalist in 10 of 12 events during the 2024 high school season. He was also awarded the Chicago Catholic League Tony Lawless Player of the Year Award. That deserves a big round of applause. So proud of you. And he also was awarded the American Junior Golf Association Birdie Sportsmanship Award, two of the highest ranking high school awards in the state. Another round of applause for Regan Conan. We now invite him down as he prepares, come on down, Alderman, as he prepares to conclude his senior year. He has been awarded a full tuition scholarship to play Division One golf at Marquette University.
Mom and Dad.
Yes. Mom and Dad, Brian and Anne are here. We have a presentation for you. Come on down. Big round of applause for Regan Conan.
So, on behalf of the mayor who's not here this evening and the city council, I'd like to present Regan, the sign. Congratulations and we wish you well in the future.
It's on street side. Big round of applause. But wait, there's more.
And then if I may read this proclamation. I need to put some glasses on. Bear with me. So this is a proclamation for Regan Conan Day, March 29th, whereas Regan Conan is a stalwart student in the Marmion Academy class of 2025, was a shining star on economic courses and on the golf course, and whereas Regan is an award-winning golfer with a 2024 high school scoring average of 69.4 and was a medalist in 10 of 12 events during the 2024 high school season, including the Aurora City Tournament, Chicago Catholic League Conference, the IHSA Regionals, Sectionals, and State Finals. And whereas Regan is a two-time back-to-back state champion who clinched the IHSA II-A Boys Golf State Championships in 2023 and 2024. And whereas the state champ has also been honored with the Chicago Catholic League Tony Lawless Player of the Year Award and the American Junior Golf Association Birdie Sportsmanship Award. And whereas Regan Conan is taking his talents to Marquette University, where he has been awarded a full tuition scholarship to play Division One golf for the Golden Eagles. Now therefore, Mayor Richard C. Urban, congratulate Regan on his outstanding accomplishments and for bringing home two state championship titles, do hereby proclaim his birthday, March 29th, as Regan Conan Day in the City of Aurora in perpetuity.
Any comments, Reg?
First, I want to thank everyone here to honor me and all my accomplishments, especially to my parents who have supported me the whole way through, and my faith that has been a very strong role in my life. So, thank you.
Another round of applause for the state champ, Regan Conan. March 29th, Regan Conan Day. So we look forward to celebrating his 18th birthday as a citywide holiday. And Regan, you also have your poster here. Now we're going to have to take an individual picture.
Okay.
Down you do an individual shot. All right, we will do one by himself and then one with his family here. All right, we'll take this up. If you can hold up for the proclamation up. There we go, one more, one more by himself. There we go. All right, that is Mom and Dad, Brian and Anne. Big round of applause. They're stalwart parents, waving superstar. Another round of applause for our state champion, back-to-back, 2023 and 2024, Regan Conan. And we look forward to celebrating your holiday, March 29th. We'll plan something big for you. Also, tonight, as we honor our cultural community, as we do each year, this time of year, Seva Diwali, we're so excited to have our family here from HSS Aurora and the entire team and other communities for putting on this annual event around the Diwali holiday time, raising food and collecting food for those who are less fortunate than us during a month-long period of time. We're going to ask the entire team to make their way down. Let's give a round of applause for the HSS Aurora team. Alderwoman Bade, if you could please join us as well. Come on down. Seva Diwali is an initiative by Dharma communities, individuals, and organizations who believe in Seva Dharma, the service to humanity is service to divinity. They foster togetherness and Seva, which is selfless giving, for the welfare of society by promoting the festive and enlightening spirituality of Diwali. They organize and collect food and other donation drives during the Diwali time period to give back to the community. We can bring the banner out and they'll share a little bit more about what they have done after their proclamation.
Okay, so I would like to read this proclamation then. For Seva Diwali, October 3rd to November 10th, 2024. Whereas Seva Diwali is a charitable food drive organized by Dharma communities across the United States during Diwali, donating hundreds of thousands of pounds of food each year, benefiting over hundreds of organizations, including food pantries, homeless shelters, worship houses, and schools. And whereas Hindu Swamya Swayam Sevak Sang USA HSS volunteers enthusiastically participate in this drive and coordinate the collections and donations regionally and nationally. And whereas the HSS Aurora chapter participates in the Seva Diwali Chicago Food Drive, benefiting organizations in the greater Chicago area, with our local food pantries in Aurora directly receiving donations. And whereas nearly 50 organizations participated in the 2024 Seva Diwali Food Drive, along with HSS Aurora, including many others. Now therefore, Mayor Richard C. Urban, thank organizations for participating with special recognition to the youth who participated and do hereby proclaim the period of October 3rd and November 10th, 2024, as Seva Diwali in the City of Aurora. Congratulations.
Big round of applause for the entire team. Now to share more, and we'll do a group photo with them, to share more about this year's project, we have sophomore from Matia Valley High School. We literally have watched him grow up around here, Yasha Swin Chintakunta. Give him a big round of applause.
Namaste and happy Diwali. My name is Yessa Swin Chintakunta, and I am a sophomore at Matia Valley High School and a volunteer for Hindu Swayam Sevak Sang. Every day, millions around the world suffer from hunger and food scarcity. To combat this issue, Hindu Swayam Sevak Sang and Seva International have partnered with 50-plus other like-minded organizations to conduct our yearly Seva Diwali Food Drive. This nationwide initiative aims to donate food to local pantries to serve our community. Seva Paramo Dharma, meaning selfless service, is the highest service a person can do. This is our motto. Diwali, also known as the Festival of Lights, is a Hindu festival celebrated with joy, lights, and fireworks to symbolize the victory of light over darkness and good over evil. We want to share the spirit of Diwali with our Aurora community through our annual food drive. Nationally, in 2023, we were able to donate over half a million pounds of food to pantries across America and 43,000 pounds to 15 pantries in the Chicagoland. And in Aurora, we were able to donate 18,000 pounds of food to pantries. Through this platform, we want to express our gratitude to our partner organizations in this drive, the food pantries for their hard work and service, the mayor, the city council, and the staff for their continued recognition and support for our efforts. We would also like to invite the mayor, the city council, and staff to join us to the food drop-off date for this year. We will share the date and location as soon as we work it out with the food pantries. On behalf of Hindu Swayam Sevak Sang, we wish you a very happy Diwali. Dhanyavad and thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Yasha Swin Chintakunta. So proud of you. Alderwoman Bade, any comments before we go?
I'm not as tall as Yash. I want to say thank you to Seva Diwali and all the organizations participating in this food drive. Thank you for your hard work for the community. I want to wish you all a very happy and prosperous Diwali. Happy Diwali, Shub Diwali. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now we'll do a group photo. Again, if you didn't catch that, they donated 18,000 pounds of food to Aurora Food Pantries last year. Another round of applause. Straight ahead here. Right here, here we go. One, two, and three. Thank you so much. Big round of applause for all the youth and the adults, HSS Aurora and the entire teams that are there. We have additional proclamations for you.
So I know some of you came here just for the presentation, so I think I'd like to invite you to be given the opportunity to leave if you need to. You're welcome to stay. We love to have you and participate in the city council meeting, but we understand if you have other commitments, and it's probably a school night as well, so I'm going to give a couple minutes for you to exit, and we thank you for attending. Okay, I understand we do not have any mayor appointments tonight, so Madam Clerk, do you have any members of the public wishing to offer a public comment?
We do.
Will you please read the rules for a public comment, Madam Clerk?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please read the name of the first person willing to give a public comment this evening?
Peter Andrews.
You are given three minutes, beginning now. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a 75-year-old, three-generation, lifelong Aurora resident, and currently a big fan of this administration and all of you. You may recall I was here about a month ago to discuss the sound barrier proposed along Orchard Road, and specifically the SSA that's for it. I just want to again say that this is different than most SSAs, which are designed for improvements to certain areas, like the lights on Downer, and also for new development. Well, this SSA is different because it's not anything new that's really going to improve anything. It's designed to correct a serious problem along that area that the residents were not responsible for. You know, be that as it may, my concern is that all parties get together to get this project done, and right now, as it stands, to impose this penalty in a 30-year lien on people's homeowners, the 74 homeowners on that area, I'm afraid that it has a real chance of not being able to pass. And quite frankly, Carl, you've worked way too hard for the past couple of years, and city engineering has worked way too hard to let this project fail. And so I want to challenge you to come up with something that really can help get this project completed. According to the latest information I've had, there's approximately a $95,000 shortfall. If the 74 homeowners are supposed to pay for it, that's about $1,300 for each homeowner on their property taxes. However, extended over 30 years, that makes it $2,500. And it also makes the city, the $95,000 shortfall will equal about $178,000, $180,000 over that time period. So I'm urging you to consider some other considerations. Maybe there are some things that you could do to help minimize that impact. Not everybody would be able to afford it, and there could be obviously some expectation from homeowners, but you know, there's other issues here. There's a life safety issue. Four vehicles have gone through that wall, I think, in the past 14 months. There's been numerous accidents. There's a high level of truck traffic that has increased carbon monoxide emissions, causing health concerns in that area. This is a major gateway into the city of Aurora. Maybe beautification funds could be used, similar to the murals that have been downtown. There's recent articles in The Beacon talking about the additional $20 million that Aurora is going to give to the built-to-road expansion. Kane County just came up with a property tax increase that they're proposing, so I'm just asking you to work together.
Thank you, sir. Your time is out. Appreciate it.
And I appreciate the hard work that's being done up to this point. Thank you.
Will the clerk read the name of the next person wishing to give a comment?
Adam Polly.
Mr. Polly? You have three minutes, beginning now, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. My name is Adam Polly, and I'm proud today to announce for the first time my candidacy to be the next Aurora Township Clerk in the primary, February 25th, 2025. This journey started a few weeks ago when the outgoing clerk, Cassidy Alexander, asked me to consider running because she is not. She said that I will uphold the high standards that she's set in that office over the last four years, and if elected, that's exactly what I intend to do. We're going to work to record our meetings and keep all of the records accurately, and you can really boil that office down to transparency, communication, and fairness. The clerk keeps all the records, all the minutes. They keep the organization in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, and they are present for all of the bid openings as well, to make sure that those are done in a fair manner also. If elected, we're going to work to record our meetings, and I've been in the public sphere for the past seven years. My anniversary is on the 14th, being doing things in government. In that time, I've been the president of our Regional Board of School Trustees, where I worked with our superintendent and staff to get that organization back into compliance with the Open Meetings Act after several years of violating our law. I'm also the secretary of our local 708 Mental Health Board, where I work to keep accurate meetings, and I'm very proud to say that our administrative costs have only been 4%. Those are private sector numbers. Finally, if I'm elected, we're going to make history in our communities. I will be the first openly LGBT person elected to any township office here in Aurora Township. Leaders are vendors of hope, and as our message of honest, competent leadership spreads throughout our community, hope will proliferate alongside it. I look forward to earning your vote as our message continues to spread. I thank you and I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to give a public comment?
Yes, sir. Ray Hall.
Mr. Hall, welcome. You have three minutes, beginning now.
Thank you. The past week, I had an opportunity to see the hearings that were held about the objections of the upcoming election and the candidates involved. In 2018, when the Aurora Election Commission was disbanded, the voters voted it out. They were not aware of what was, what possibilities were and what could happen. One of the reasons that the Election Commission was there to begin with was to be a hedge against politics and the possibility of playing games with an election. And so the reason that I'm speaking is because this is exactly what has happened now going forward. In 2021, Alderman Ron Warman was a resident of Oswego, Illinois. He admitted it during the hearing. He said that he lived there 60% of the time and in Aurora 40% of the time. Any reasonable person that knows that, and Ron was honest enough to do that, so I give him credit for being honest about it. But he had a school-aged daughter and a teenager graduating from high school, and he still was allowed to stay on the ballot. That was inappropriate for that to happen. The other thing that I saw the other day was, I happened to see Mr., former Alderman Lamas, representing someone against the Fourth Ward. I want to just throw this out there for him. Rule 8.4 misconduct, the American Bar Association. Letter C says to engage in conduct involving dishonesty, fraud, dissent, deceit, or misrepresentation is exactly what he did when he kept his position for over a year, knowing that he had moved out of our ward. And part A of that says to violate or attempt to violate rules and professional conduct knowingly, assist or induce another to do so or to do through the acts of another. That's what I believe happened with Mr. Veenstra, who is also an attorney, that they knew that he had moved because they had been told about it. The commission, as it currently stands, cannot be fair when it's a three-person commission and the clerk is an appointed employee by the mayor, and they automatically create some majority in any voting that would go on. That has nothing to do with Mrs. Stallings. I respect her and I understand that, but the chances of her ever voting against the mayor's wishes are slim to none. Alderman Seville, I'm asking you that in this process coming up, you and Alderman Garza, that you guys would bring some integrity back to the process that's going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members willing to give a public comment? Madam Clerk?
Yes, the next speaker is Greg Bolger.
You have three minutes, beginning now, sir.
Thank you. This is in reference to 240708. Hello, my name is Greg Bolger, and I live in the single-family community next to the proposed townhomes. I would like to thank those Aldermen who met with us to see our concerns firsthand. You were able to see just how close the buildings will be to us, and I imagine you also got a taste of what it's like to try to exit our community, even though it was on a Saturday. As we mentioned before, I88, Matia Valley High School, Ranger Middle School, gas stations, and many stores are north of us, so making a left out of our subdivision is often the goal, though it's a treacherous endeavor. Like others, my family uses an app to track our cell phone locations. When my kids leave the house, I'll sit there watching my phone, sometimes for several minutes because they can't get out of the subdivision. During this time, I get a knot in my stomach and my mind starts to race. When they do finally start moving on the Yellow Road, I feel like a weight has been lifted off me. Potentially adding 100 more cars to the situation will be an absolute disaster waiting to happen. Some people suggest to go and do a U-turn at Liberty Street. To me, that option is like jumping out of the frying pan and into the fire. This intersection is fast-moving, congested, and flat-out dangerous, too. I've heard this intersection is possibly the most dangerous intersection in Aurora, and I discourage my family members for using this option. I understand the developer wants to put as many units in the buildable area as possible or something very close to it, but my neighbors and I will be paying the price for it. Between the egress nightmare and having buildings so close to us they feel like they're in our backyards, I'm certain our home values will be going down as a result. I believe this zoning change, as proposed, should not be approved. The density should be lessened, and a significant buffer should be placed between the two subdivisions before approval is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to give a public comment?
Next is Anthony Biondo.
Welcome. You have three minutes, beginning now.
My name's Anthony Biondo, and the reason I got questions, I was sent for the SS90, which is supposed to expire, I guess, in this year. I get a letter through the mail, not from the city, but from a law firm, which doesn't make no sense. I don't know, but I don't understand. I had, I was under the impression everything was paid for, you know, a 20-year warranty. I had, I was under the impression everything was paid for, you know, in a 20-year period. So what's going to keep after, they want to extend it for five years. What's going to keep from the city extended another five years? You know, I'm retired, and that, I don't understand that. But like I said, the thing I don't understand, instead of getting something from the city, get it from a law firm. I mean, the city should have sent it. I mean, that's all I have to say, but, which I don't understand it. I wish, you know, like I said, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to give a public comment?
Rohan Shah.
Mr. Shah, you have three minutes beginning now.
This is to reference 240708. Hello, I am Rohan Shah. I'm 17, and I go to Matea Valley High School, and I drive to school every day. I got my license in April of this year, and I want to talk about a couple points why it would be better if there was a traffic light on this intersection. Every morning around 7:00 a.m., I struggle to make the left turn to get to school because there is so much traffic. It usually takes six to seven minutes to find a safe moment to turn. Even then, it feels risky because of the road that goes downhill. It makes it hard to see oncoming cars, which is often going fast. There's another way to make a turn, but it involves lane splitting, which means if the lane closest to the neighborhood is clear, you make your car parallel to the two roads and wait in the middle until the road on the other side is clear, and then you can go. However, this way is dangerous for two main reasons, and I will tell you why. You might not fully be in the center, which puts both me and other drivers at risk in the amount of accidents. A neighbor once told me that he tried this and stopped in the middle of the two lanes, and the car on the far lane thought he was turning and didn't check carefully, and he hit the brakes, causing a five-car accident. This is why I don't lane split, because I'm scared to cause an accident or be in one. For these reasons, I believe that we need a traffic light at this intersection. Making the left turn is already hard as traffic increases. It would only get harder when more cars are leaving at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. A traffic light would make it safer for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shah. Any other members of the public wishing to give a public comment?
Next is Savna Shah.
You have three minutes beginning now.
Yes. Hi. Thank you for inviting me here and listening to what I have to say. I just have a request of three reasons. I have the safety issue for myself, I have the safety issue for my kids, and I have the safety issue for my neighbor. This is the bigger concern that I have, and I'm so sorry, I should have said, I'm talking about 2408, 0708 issue, which is on the Eola, and we have a bigger problem going towards the north bond on Eola Road. Okay? What I wanted to say is, we, our neighborhood was built 23 years ago. The traffic was different, Eola Road was different, and that, in general, like, you know, everything was different. And when we bought the house, we did not even had, think about a nightmare that WBIG building will ever convert it into the residential. So we never thought about ingress or egress issue at that point. But like my son just said, it is a issue. Unfortunately, in this country, they cannot vote when they are, until 18, but they can drive at 15 and a half. And if my kid is not safe on my own neighborhood, what else I can expect from the community? So that is my concern. The second thing I want to say is, in our neighborhood, there are 19 homes, and out of 19 homes, within three to five years of period from today, there are 16 kids going to the school, driving by themselves from 15 and a half to 18 and a half until they go to the college. So those four years are going to be crucial for the parent like me, and my safety concern is something that nobody can disobey. Like, you come here and see how difficult it is right now with only the 19 homes. If you add another 54 homes in that subdivision or in that equation, think about what chaos that we are inviting into. What if anything happens to my kid or any other kid who is trying to turn left on Eola? What will happen to that kid? Just think about it. I don't want to see that nightmare. I have another 30 seconds. I really urge you all, who is going to make the decision today on this property, to think about the traffic issue and think about the people who already live on that neighborhood. We do not have choice to leave from that neighborhood, but you do have a choice to approve or decline the issue because of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to give a public comment?
Jose Orta.
Mr. Orta. You have three minutes beginning now.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jose Orta, and I live at 1005 Riverstone Drive, and I'm here for the same concerns that Ms. Shah had and Mr. Bolger had with the, with the safety concerns and the development that is being built closer to the residences. We, I've been there for 21 years already, and during these 21 years, you know, the safety issue has been climbing and climbing because it's been more populated, you know, more cars. And now that this development is being proposed there, it's going to add at least 100 cars, you know, to that, to that, to that intersection. So I do understand that the county or could, DuPage County, might have a say on a traffic light, but the people that will suffer is our people, is Aurora people, is the people that live in that neighborhood. So they could say something, but I think, you know, we do need to get more involved into this situation with this traffic light. And I do understand, I'm an engineer, so I do understand numbers, guidelines, and formulas. However, in here, we're not talking about, you know, guidelines, and guidelines can be relaxed or, or reviewed, because in here, we're not talking about guidelines anymore. It's just, we're talking about life, people's lives. We are in an intersection that is one of the most dangerous intersections in Aurora, from what I hear. There are, you know, a ton of accidents there, and the accidents are very major. People have, you know, died there and have suffered many consequences that, you know, changes lives. So I will appreciate that, you know, you take this, I know that you take this matter seriously, but I think we need to get more involved and, and just, you know, all of us can get for a solution that is safer for us, for the community, and for the whole town of Aurora. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else willing to give, signed up for public comment?
The final speaker signed up is Emily Bopri.
You have three minutes beginning now.
Hello there. I'm Emily Bopri. I own ZenLoft in downtown Aurora. Just opened up a second location in Batavia. So I'm, I'm a licensed massage therapist of 23 years, and I was invited to speak on the location. That's, I don't know the address, and I didn't see it on the agenda, but I believe it's on continuing business. There's a location that opened up on Broadway right across from, oh dang it, I can't remember. Anyway, I would like to offer vetting services on any new business that comes into town who's going to offer massage therapy. When I went to Batavia, there's like a minimum of 90 days, there's $500 application fee, there's a million other hoops to jump through, which as a person, that was very arduous for me. But as a business, and if it were my city, I would, I would want the same to be put into place. So I just want to know how that business is vetted, if the people there are licensed or not. You can be certified in a lot of different modalities, and it'd be perfectly legal, and everybody can be insured, and there's no, you know, human trafficking going on in those situations. But it's open late. There's other things that are part of, without knowing any information about this business. So I don't want to speak and say that, that they're up to anything shady without knowing. But I would like to offer, to be on some kind of committee or something where we can vet for the safety of the people working there and then the health and safety of the community, because it does directly affect my business. It does directly affect the image that Aurora has if we are allowing those kind of places to come into the downtown. You don't want the types of people who frequent those places to be out at bars and restaurants and, and other places. And you, you absolutely don't want people who are working in those businesses to also be attracting other people into the town that could do us harm and other businesses harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up for public comment?
There is not.
Okay. That will conclude our public comments this evening. Now we have three public hearings. We will allow testimony for this hearing. Does anyone have any questions or testimony that would like to be heard for the purpose of this public item? And do we need to read that first? Yeah, public hearing only?
240844, public hearing only related to real property commonly known as Plum Street, Howard Avenue, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith on the proposed extension of Special Service Area 90 in the city of Aurora, Kane County.
There will be an opportunity to first make public comment, and then we will have and take any testimony or questions. Our public comment rules shall apply, and each speaker shall be allowed a total of three minutes to speak. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard for the purpose of public comment on this item? Again, this is SSA number 90. Chris.
Mr. Mayor Protam, may I offer just a brief explanation of why we're here and what's, what's going on?
Yes, please proceed.
Thank you. Chris Minnick, Chief Financial Officer for the city. We're here in regard to Special Service Area number 90. Special Service Area number 90 financed curb, gutter, sidewalk, and driveway apron improvements in the area of Plum Street and Howard Avenue in Ward 4 within the city. The Special Service Area was created back in levy year 2024, and the first special, I'm sorry, 2004, not 2024, 2004. And the first taxes were collected from the special area, Special Service Area in 2005. The cost of the improvements that was financed by the SSA was $126,250, and the SSA was imposed for that amount for a 20-year term. The Special Service Area tax was intended to raise $6,113 each year to amortize the costs that were advanced for those particular improvements. If you take the 126,250 divided by 20 years, you get $6,313 approximately. However, the ordinance that established Special Service Area number 90 also included a provision that the tax rate for Special Service Area 90 could not exceed 57 cents per $100 of equalized assessed valuation, or EAV. And what actually happened was from the levy years 2012 through 2017, the EAV of the Special Service Area, the tax base of that particular Special Service Area, actually declined to a level that the maximum tax rate, when multiplied by the tax base, would not generate $6,313. So instead, there were several years, about five or six years, where the taxes generated were actually somewhere between $4,000 and it looks like about $5,500 during that six-year timeframe. So this has actually created a situation wherein $114,934 out of that initial anticipated $126,250 that was financed is what's been collected to date. So there's a shortfall of just about $11,315. What the proposal is and what the proposed ordinance would do would be to extend the SSA, Special Service Area number 90, for a five-year period, beginning with the 2025 tax levy to be collected during 2026. In actuality, we will probably not need that five-year life to, to amortize the remainder of the improvements that were financed. Once the $11,315 would be collected, which we anticipate would take about two to three years, we would actually, at that point, not extend any more taxes for the Special Service Area at that point. So we are not actually asking for any additional funds. The issue became that during several years, the amount of funding that was anticipated by the SSA was not generated. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any initial questions that the council may have before taking any public comment.
Any questions, the city council? Alderman Ash?
Do we know how many people, how many homes this SSA came out to?
I didn't count, but it looked like it was about 50 to 60 properties to me. But I can get that exact number.
And then is there a way, Chris, if, if somebody wanted to just pay their portion and not pay over the course of three to five years, where they could just pay their portion? I ask that because a lot of these deals end up with a, with a healthy interest rate, and then the residents end up paying that interest on top of that.
This particular Special Service Area is interest-free. There is no interest that's been levied. The dollars of the Special Service Area and the improvements that were established were $126,250, and that is what we would be collecting over the life as extended, if it were extended.
So, so it's about if you divide that number by the $11,315 by 50 homes, it's $226 per household?
Yes, and I apologize, I did not answer the root of your question. The Special Service Area law does not allow for a payment in advance. There is, it is an ad valorem property tax that's levied over the period of the SSA.
Okay. Do we know what that will equate to per household?
So far, at the six, at the $6,313, it's been running about 29 to 34. I didn't check every home, but I checked a couple. It's, it's in that range, I believe.
Okay. And then, Mr. Mayor Protam, I know, I saw hands go up, so maybe explain the public comment when it comes that time.
Yeah, we will, yes. Any other questions? Alderman Zell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did, this is in the fourth ward, and we did have a conversation. So just to be clear, we're not asking the residents to pay any more than they originally agreed to. We're just stretching those payments out due to the assessed valuation situation.
That is correct, Alderman.
And, and again, zero interest?
Zero interest.
And I, we also asked the question, could people prepay? And you told me at that time that, that the ordinance did not allow that, so.
Correct.
So the amount that they're going to pay each year, will that be equal to or less than what they've had to pay in the past?
It should be about the same if we continue with that 6, $6,300.
And that's why we've given ourselves the five years, so that we don't have to escalate that payment.
Correct.
So same payment, no interest? Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, the city council? So at this point in time, anybody wishing to give public comment? Please step forward. And you can also ask questions if you need to do that. Please recognize yourself.
My name is Janet Biondo. I'm married to the man that got taken out of the room, which makes me a little anxious. It's 38 homes involved. Also, the letter we received approximately three weeks ago stated that what was, some of the things that were done were special and unique. I don't know what was. The park were special and unique. I don't know what was. The parkway was filled below the curb and the sidewalk and highway-grade seed was what was thrown in there. There were a lot of other things. I spent a lot of time calling. They cut six to eight inches of blacktop out of my driveway and wanted to replace it with two inches. Forgive my sarcasm, but that is special, you know? And what guarantee are we going to have that he's saying one to two, maybe even three years, but they won't keep taking the funds out for the full five? And we, you know, we were told things before. I'm sorry the math was wrong, but how should that fall on us? Again, I thank you for your time. I just, like I say, what was special and unique that was done on our block that maybe wasn't in the original bill, bids? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you want to answer?
Well, I wasn't with the city in 2004 when the, when the area was created. However, I am familiar with similar situations in other municipalities and it's not uncommon when a, an area is developed, if it is not necessarily developed to the current standards or the current level of improvements and development that is in the subdivision code, that sometimes there will be an effort to go back into those neighborhoods and update the streets, put in curb, put in gutter, put in sidewalk. I presume that was what was done in this particular instance. Generally, what I have seen is that those items are usually partially funded by the municipality and then there's a split of the costs with the homeowners. Again, I presume that that's what, what happened in this particular situation. So again, to stress kind of to Alderman Donnell's point a moment ago, this is, this is not an increase over what was agreed to be paid initially when the SSA was established. It's simply collecting the dollars that were anticipated to be collected by the special service area and the result of, of the shortfall was actually that the taxable value of the special service area declined for that five- to six-year period.
Okay, if I remember correctly, this was initiated by Alderman at the time Chuck Nelson in 2004. He was your Alderman, correct? Right?
Yeah.
And it was for curb and gutter and I believe some sidewalk too? And were the streets involved?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, any other members of the public wishing to?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Donnell.
I did have one other individual ask questions on this and he was, he was good enough to provide the paperwork that went along with this. And I would suspect that it was curb, gutter, sidewalk. The streets are normally taken care of by the city.
Yes.
But they, at that time, paid twenty-five percent of the cost of that project.
Okay.
Block grant paid twenty-five percent and ward funds paid fifty percent.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the city council chambers would like to speak on this item, SSA number ninety? Most men made by Alderman, Alderman Smith, second by Alderman Franco, ought to close the public hearing? Do we need to call the roll or just say Alderman? Yeah, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
On a motion to close the hearing, yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay, thank you. Motion is approved. The hearing is adjourned. Next item is twenty-four dash zero eight four six.
Public hearing only related to real property commonly known as Lincoln Crossing South, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith on the proposed expansion of special service area two zero eight in the city of Aurora Will County.
Again, there will be an opportunity to first make public comment and then we'll take any testimony or questions. Our public comment rules shall apply and each speaker shall be allowed a total of three minutes to speak. Is there anyone at this time from the public willing to be heard and give testimony or comment on this item? Please step forward. Anyone? Staff wanting to do any presentation on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Most men made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderwoman Smith.
I have a comment.
Close the public hearing. Alderman Bug?
Yeah. Is anyone stepping up from staff?
Jason Bauer, Assistant Director of Public Works. This is just to expand the SSA that already exists to the area that's newly added to the property.
Yeah, the dormant storm area. So.
Correct.
So we spoke to the residents out there about the expansion and that's why I wanted to have staff address this a little bit. The, by state law, when you're doing an expansion into a new area, there's a set timeframe that the former area has to be turned over to the HOA. My understanding is that the new area is going to extend that time and the residents are very concerned that it's going to go past the limit. They would like the first area, Lincoln Crossing, turned back over to the residents as soon as possible. So like I said, my understanding is they are going to wait to turn over the whole area after Lincoln Crossing South is complete, which is problematic for the residents. So there's anyone else from planning here?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if, that's, that's our understanding as well, too. So I don't know if anybody from planning can chime in on exactly what that time limit is or what we're looking for, but in terms of the SSA itself, yeah, that's our understanding, that it's going to remain with the developer for now.
Yeah, the whole, the whole.
The entire portion.
Lincoln Crossing and Lincoln Crossing South. Okay. All right, so just noted for the record that we need to look into this further, the planning department, and I will inquire. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else willing to give testimony? If not, any motion and a second to adjourn? This is public hearing. Is there a motion?
There was a motion made by Alderman Franco, second by Alderwoman Smith.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay, the hearing is adjourned. Clerk, please read the next item.
Twenty-four zero eight four eight, public hearing only related to real property commonly known as Del Webb Phase Three, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith on the proposed expansion of special service area two one two in the city of Aurora Will County.
Okay, there will be an opportunity first to make public comment and then we will take testimony or questions. Our public comment rules, again, shall apply and each speaker should be allowed a total of three minutes to speak. Is there anyone currently from the public wishing to be heard? Step forward and give testimony and comment now. Yes, sir. Please step forward. Please recognize yourself. You have three minutes to speak, beginning now.
Good evening all. My name is Gopala Seelam. I'm the Wocus North resident. As my neighborhood residents have concern regarding the traffic, one of my concerns is the same, along with this, the ingress and exit is the concern. And along with that, the traffic, the neighborhood is closed and there are bet lines around it. Would like to make sure that those are protected for any developments around it. We have not got a chance to look at all the impact, but will be reviewing and working with that. Just again, safety is the concern primary. Thank you.
Sir, could you spell your first name and last name, please?
Gopala Seelam. Thank you.
Could you spell it, please?
S-E-E-L-A-M, Seelam. Gopala, G-O-P-A-L-A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Protam, do we need to recognize that that is not a comment for this particular public hearing? It's for the Eola Road portion?
Corporation Council?
I think the record, I think the record is evident without saying so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone wishing to give public comment? Please step forward at this point.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman, Alderwoman Garza, to close the public hearing. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay, this hearing is adjourned then. We have another public hearing then, twenty-four dash zero eight five one. Will the clerk please read the following?
Twenty-four zero eight five one, public hearing only related to real property commonly known as Del Webb Phase Three, calling for a public hearing and other procedures in connection with the proposed expansion of special service area two one seven in the city of Aurora Will County.
Okay, so again, this is for special service area two seventeen only. So please, those of you that are willing to give public comment will address yourself to that. So now again, this is opportunity to make public comment. We will take any testimony questions at this time. If you'd like to give public comment, please step forward now and be recognized.
Motion to close the public.
Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Alderman Lash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think with, with these four SSAs, if, if we could also explain or have somebody from staff explain the process after the hearing closes, where these go to next for the, so they're, so they're aware of the process, at least for those who did come to comment on these.
Can our corporation and council address that question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. This is the second step in the, what is a three-step process with the establishment of a special service area, the extension of a special service area. The first step was the ordinance proposing the creation or the extension of a special service area. This is the public hearing portion. The next step would be adoption of the ordinance to establish the SSA, which is not on tonight's agenda.
So that'll probably run its way back through finance or is it just going to appear in the next council meeting?
That one, ordinarily, an SSA establishment without objection may go under direct consent. These are not, with respect to the two, the ones that are.
Is there a thirty-day period or something?
With respect to the ones that are designed for the stormwater backup plan, the dormant SSAs, those ordinarily would go on a consent agenda at a subsequent meeting. With respect to the other SSAs, the, in particular, the extension of the SSA for ninety, that would come through the normal legislative process. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Alderman Bug?
For the record, I just wanted to see, and maybe we're back with engineering instead of planning, I just wanted to see where the mailing went on this, what the radius was on the mailing on this matter.
Legal might be able to clarify, but I think it was just the existing people within the SSA. I don't know if there was a radius to inform anybody else outside of just existing SSA members.
That is correct. It would be the property owners and the residents in the affected area.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of the city council? Then this hearing is now adjourned.
We had a motion in a second. We didn't have a roll call yet.
Yes, motion for second for adjournment by Alderman Franco, second by Alderwoman Smith. Please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderwoman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Okay, again, this hearing is adjourned. Next, we hear both the consent agenda and the director council agenda in full. Will the clerk now please read both agenda and in, those in full?
Twenty-four zero seven two five, a resolution authorizing standard and associates as the provider for services of pre-employment psychological assessments through December 31st, 2024. Twenty-four zero seven five six, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class B onsite consumption banquet hall liquor licenses unofficially related to the application from NCV Holdings Doing Businesses of Vault 106 at 106 West Indian Trail in Ward Six. Twenty-four zero seven seven four, a resolution approving the purchase of bulk rock salt in the amounts of sixty-eight dollars and two cents and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents per ton from Morton Salt in Chicago and Compass Minerals America Oakland Park, Kansas for the Division of Street Maintenance under the State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Agreement bid for the 2024-2025 winter season. Twenty-four zero seven seven five, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to provide funding to Leopardo Construction of Hoffman Estates in the amount of eleven million, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred sixty-one dollars for the complete guaranteed maximum price scope, not including soft costs, with a five percent contingency for construction of new fire station number nine. Twenty-four zero seven seven six, a resolution authorizing the director of purchasing to provide funding to Leopardo Construction of Hoffman Estates in the amount of twelve million, eight hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars for the complete guaranteed maximum price scope, not including soft costs, with a five percent contingency for construction of new fire station number thirteen. Twenty-four zero seven nine seven, a resolution authorizing the expenditures to game time in excess of fifty thousand dollars for renovations of Bishop Bonner Park. Twenty-four zero eight three four, a resolution authorizing the department heads of the city to enter into agreements with public agencies for access to certain data thereof. Twenty-four zero eight five four, a resolution authorizing the execution of a partnership agreement with the Conservation Foundation as a necessary component of the proposed application to the United States Environmental Protection Agency Community Change Grant Program. Twenty-four zero eight two six, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 city council meeting.
So moved. Been moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Franco. Are there any questions or any motions to remove any items on the either consent, director council consent agenda or the consent agenda?
Mayor Protam?
Yes, Alderman Masiacos.
I have a question. I don't know if it needs to be removed yet. If, if our CFO can please come to the, to the microphone. It's in regards to the, the item for an expenditure to game time for Bishop Bonner Park, two four dash zero seven nine seven.
Okay, I don't have my agenda.
All right, thank you. Can you give me the final number? What are we actually approving dollar-wise exactly for this legislative piece?
I believe it is the sum of the forty-one, four seventy-five and the forty-nine, nine eighty-seven, if memory serves.
All right. I look at your treasury report for August. There's a, there's a, there's an expenditure for game time that equals this amount exactly, forty-nine, nine eighty-seven for game time.
Okay, I would, I would need to check to see if, if it is the same. It's not.
It was pulled.
Oh.
It was created. Jolene Coulter, Director of Purchasing, that did come across my desk. That's what brought up this agenda item. I noticed it. I started asking questions. We never actually signed the PO and moved forward with it.
So you didn't move over your notes on the?
No, nothing's been moving forward.
Treasury, Treasury report for the month. Is there anything, I mean, now it's like next question. Anything else that got pulled off your treasury report or just that? Anything else that got pulled off your Treasury report or just that?
Well, we can ask that later. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done. Will the clerk please call the roll on both consent agendas?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion carries. Both consent agenda and the direct counsel agenda are approved. The next item is the unfinished business. Will the clerk please?
24-0694, a resolution amending the agreement between the city and Aurora downtown for the provision of special services and the payment of the proceeds of special service area taxes collected in the area constituting special service area one.
So moved. There's a motion. Moved by Alderman Smith, is there a second? Second by Alderman Franco. Any further discussion? All in favor, please, clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Babe?
Yes.
Alderman Lesh?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
Okay, will the clerk please read the next one, 24-0708?
24-0708, an ordinance establishing a conditional use plan development approving the Eola Preserve Plan description and amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Aurora, by modifying the zoning map attached thereto to an underlying zoning of R4A and OS1 for the property located at 620 North Eola Road.
Is there a motion?
So, I have a question on this here.
Alderman Warman?
Yeah. So, I had discussions with the developer's attorney and with the residents, and I would like to make a motion if we can hold this for two more weeks so they can meet and discuss maybe some potential changes. That would help.
Second.
Why don't you get a second on Alderman Franco's motion and then, then it would be-
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman Franco. Do bring this up to the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Smith, and there's a motion made by Alderman Warman and second by Alderman Lesh to hold this for two weeks. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, can you restate the motion?
Motion to hold this for two weeks. So I spoke with the developer's attorney and I spoke with some of the residents, and they had asked if they could have a little more time to meet and discuss this project a little bit further.
May I ask a question?
Alderman Smith.
Would this be appropriate time to see if the petitioner has any additional information to share with us about this project?
Is the petitioner here? Yes. Please come forth and recognize yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Caitlin Chuck with the law firm Rosenoff &amp; Whitaker. It's nice to see you all again. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. So, thank you, Alderman Smith. We'd like to just come back and let you know kind of where we stand from the last time we were here at Committee of the Hall. We do have some new information to share with you. So, last time we spoke at the Committee of the Hall, our team took some time to revisit some of the topics that were discussed at the last meeting, so we do want to continue to work towards solutions on those questions and comments that had been raised. So, to start, there were some questions about the timing of the counts of the traffic study. As noted, the initial counts were from July and did not include school traffic. We have supplemental counts from December 20th, which were used and incorporated into the study. We verified that school was in session when those counts were in fact conducted. Even so, just wanted to point out that the peak hour of traffic does not exactly correlate with the schedule for high schools. So the first period of high schools begins at 7:25 a.m., and the peak load associated with schools is around 7:10 to 7:25. The peak hour of traffic on Eola is between 7:30 and 8:30. Similarly, school lets out around 2:05 or 2:25, depending on the high school, and the peak evening hours are between 4:45 and 5:45 p.m. Next, we had our traffic engineer conduct a supplemental analysis to see if a stoplight is warranted or could ever be warranted with the proposed development. Please note, DuPage County did approve our traffic study prior to the analysis being conducted. Their approval of the study does indicate that this intersection does not warrant a stoplight. Even so, we took it upon ourselves to do some more due diligence and conduct a separate full warrant analysis, though not required, in order to confirm for ourselves and evaluate all avenues and opportunities for a stoplight at this location. And the conclusion we reached is really just how far away we are from obtaining a stoplight here. In total, there were nine warrants that were evaluated. Two of the warrants were the eight-hour volume and four-hour volume warrants, so under the eight-hour analysis, Waterstone would need to meet a minimum threshold of 100 vehicles per hour for eight hours. Under the four-hour analysis, the minimum threshold for the minor street is 80 vehicles per hour for four hours. After the development, Waterstone's peak volume is expected to be 27 vehicles per hour and will not qualify for this warrant. To boil it down, we would need about four times the traffic volume. A stoplight will not be approved by DUDOT with the development here or with several other options of development in this location. Again, we wanted to take the opportunity to take this a step forward and fully evaluate all the avenues and just how far away we are from a stoplight at this location. In addition, crash data was brought up at the last meeting. Crash experience is certainly a warrant that was evaluated under that warrant analysis. We evaluated a five-year period for crash experience from 2019 to 2023. There were a total of 26 crashes during that five-year period, so that averages about five crashes per year. None of the crashes were fatal, and none of them were the result of any turns, whether it was onto Waterstone or from Waterstone. In addition, there have been three accidents at this intersection for this year, and none of those were left turns. This warrant not only considers the frequency and severity of crashes, but also requires satisfaction of warrant number one, which is that eight-hour volume warrant analysis, or warrant number four, which includes pedestrian volumes. And here, we do not have pedestrian volumes, so neither of those warrants are met. Next, we went back to the video that was associated with our traffic study in order to understand what the wait times were at that intersection. So, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., we saw a total of 10 left turns out of Waterstone onto Eola. That's one car every 12 minutes, and the traffic here is a fraction of 1% of traffic on Eola. One turn took 1 minute, 1 minute and 14 seconds, and the rest of the turns occurred in under 1 minute. The average wait time was 29 seconds in that morning peak hour. From 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., there were a total of six left turns onto Eola. That equates to one car every 20 minutes. The longest wait time was 2 minutes and 8 seconds. The shortest wait time was 19 seconds, and the average was about 68 seconds. So the operation of this intersection is generally expected to operate with delays, especially during those peak hours because it is a local road that's connecting with an arterial road. That said, with the development, we're only expecting the traffic to increase to one car about every four minutes in the peak hour and one car every eight minutes in the peak hour in the evening, so we can reasonably conclude that as a result of this development, traffic will not significantly increase in this area. All of that said, we are certainly sympathetic to the residents with respect to this intersection, and we understand that the existing median makes the left turn movement more difficult than it really should be. To this end, between the Committee of the Hall meeting and now, the petitioner looked at the condition and was working on a proposal to widen the median on Eola in order to help improve that two-stage left turn at this location. But unfortunately, as of this afternoon, DuPage County rejected the proposal. That said, we want to make it apparent that we have been actively working towards solutions on this. We want to work together. We want to work with the city. We also want to work with the residents. If everybody can help us, I mean, we are happy to keep putting pressure on DuPage County for some improvements at this intersection. Please keep in mind, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the petitioner is also proposing to widen Waterstone Drive so there's a separate left turn lane and right turn lane in order to alleviate congestion on that street. We are also proposing a separate right out onto Eola Road so that we can distribute some more traffic more efficiently for those people trying to take a right. So these are other safe right options as well onto Eola. Lastly, it's not a matter of if the property will be developed, but really how and when. If the property is not developed under this R4 zoning and the proposal that we're requesting, evaluation as to what could potentially develop under the existing property rights would be considered. So as we discussed at the last meeting, there are some pretty high-intensity uses under the existing M1 zoning designation. With that, an industrial user could come in by right with a code-compliant plan, and it would not require consideration by council. On the site, we evaluated 110,000 square feet of industrial use to see what this would do to the traffic conditions, and it would generate more daily trips generally than what we are expecting under our proposal, and we would see nearly two times as much traffic during those peak hours. Keeping in mind that this traffic would certainly include semi-trucks, and it could potentially happen during all hours as well. So acknowledging the alternative, we do believe that downsizing the property to allow the property, or I'm sorry, to allow the proposal is truly the highest and best use of the property, provides a logical transition from the high-density apartments to the south, to the single-family homes to the north. And with that, I do want to thank you all for your time and consideration. I want to thank you all for the, affording us the opportunity to conduct these additional studies, come back with data and numbers in response to the questions that were raised at the last meeting. So, again, we're very serious about working towards solutions and on those concerns that have been raised. So with that, if you have additional questions, we're happy to answer them this evening.
Any questions to the petitioner? Alderman, Alderman Smith?
Yes, great information. I just got to slow you down just a minute. So if we go back to, I said, I think you said the peak hours for high schools, 7:10 to 7:15, and then you said that traffic going out, you threw out some numbers there, with the outgoing traffic going left, was there a number of cars going out at that moment, or was-
Not a number of cars, just trying to establish the fact that even though the counts were conducted during, while school was in session, school actually being in session is kind of a moot point in the situation because the peak hours that are evaluated under the traffic study are between 7:30 and 8:30.
So the peak hours on Eola Road where the traffic is the worst is after high school's already started?
After school starts, yes, correct.
The same thing-
In the evening.
At the end of the school day, when high school gets out at, what, 2:15-ish, the peak hours are later on-
Correct.
That evening. Okay.
They don't correlate.
I just wanted to confirm that that's what you said. Thank you.
And again, to remind the council, this is a motion to hold for two weeks. Any discussion on Alderman Warman?
I'd say a couple of comments. First and foremost, I just want to thank the attorneys for taking the time to speak with me today. I really appreciate that, and I think we covered a lot of ground. Some of the residents I did speak to, I think they understand that a stoplight is not going to happen. I just think with the traffic study itself, and they just, I think, realize that it's there. I think they appreciate the opportunity to maybe suggest some alternatives to the development that currently sits in front of us. I think is all they're really asking for. And I spoke with them right before this, and I think they're anxious to sit down and see if there's some things that would benefit both parties in this. So again, I appreciate everybody taking the time to do this, so.
Certainly, and we're happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Alderman Bug.
You said that DuPage County denied the widening of the median. Did their traffic engineer give input on reasoning? He doesn't vote, but before it goes to that committee or that council, did they give, what was the traffic engineer from DuPage County's recommendation, one way or the other, or?
It was more so that they're not looking to consider it at this time. They would look to consider it at a later date if Eola Road was ever widened in the future. It was just something that was, they're not considering it at this time.
Thank you.
Any other question or discussions on holding this for two weeks?
Yep.
Alderman Tolliver?
So, first and foremost, I want to second the sentiments of Alderman Warman. I kind of pulled him into this when all of this was going down, so I thank him for continuing to be a champion for this neighborhood, and I thank you as well for taking the time to, you know, take my calls, answer the questions that I have. This neighborhood, as a lot of us heard during public comments, it's a small neighborhood, about 19 houses. I'm almost 1,000% sure. I've talked to every person that lives in that neighborhood throughout the better part of, I would say, a year. I do appreciate the fact that you guys continue to have additional meetings. You guys, you know, took some time off, did some additional things. I really do believe that we will get to a point where everybody is at least generally happy with what's going on. I don't think that any of the concerns that I've heard from the residents are unrealistic. I believe that you guys have heard them. You know, we've had these meetings. I've gone out to the neighborhood a handful of times. I've tried to leave that neighborhood, and sometimes I just give up and I make a right to go home. So I understand what's going on. I also understand the peak times. I think that we can all appreciate the information, the data that was given, but I think that if we're living in that neighborhood and we're having to do this every day, multiple times a day, sometimes these numbers don't look like anything because that's not the real life that they live, or at least, you know, whatever the case may be. So I do appreciate everything that you guys are bringing to do. I do think if we continue the talks that we've been having for the last few weeks or months in some of these cases, that we will get to a resolution. So I definitely wholeheartedly second that motion to hold this for a couple of more weeks, let you guys get back out there, continue working with, you know, myself, Alderman Warman, whoever else is involved, and then I think we can get to some type of resolution very soon. That's my hope. I understand both sides from being a construction underwriter, but then also being the voice of Ward 7 in that specific neighborhood as well, in which I've spent a lot of time in. So I'm very hopeful that we can get to something. So I'd just say we go back to the drawing board. You guys know you can call me anytime. I'm sure I can call you guys anytime. I do have some additional questions that I can forward over to you specifically that did come from one of the residents that couldn't make it tonight. You may have seen some of them already, but I still just want to make sure that you have them so we can make sure, to kind of get everything kind of wrapped up hopefully in the next week or so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Lesh?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. One question for the petitioner, one question for our street department. In your traffic study, when you mentioned, I want to say 68 seconds, I wasn't scribbling as fast as you were talking. Were those right or left turns?
Left turns.
Those were left turns?
Correct.
Okay. And then the question for staff is, Old Eola Road, pretty much everybody in this, if they prove this subdivision, is going to have to exit via Old Eola Road, which has pretty much not been used. And it's my understanding that as part of this agreement, they're going to resurface it, but that's also a very narrow road. I'm wondering if we've done any engineering studies to look at that, to see if there needs to be any changes or adaptations to improve that road outside of just resurfacing. Does it have to be widened in particular?
Brian Wackowski, Engineering Department. We have not looked at requiring widening on Old Eola Road at this time. We have looked at resurfacing it in a couple of different ways. We either resurfacing it as a part of their development, or we're going to resurface it as a part of our street program next year. But widening, we have not looked at that. We do, we have, we're looking at the geometry of the right out and the turn going into the new development. We've looked at that very closely, and we believe that everybody can make all of the turns that are required there. But it is a rural cross-section with, there's no curb and gutter on either side, so there's just stone shoulders on either side.
Is it going to need any improvements? I don't know what class of road it's going to need to be should this development go through.
We don't anticipate that the roadway design is going to change at all based on the new traffic. Overall, this isn't a lot of extra trips. I think you said 26 additional trips per day, so the design of that road is not needing to be changed as far as accommodating traffic going on that way.
Okay. And I guess just some final comments for the rest of the council to consider, whether it's to delay or look at this in the final end. I'm not sure exactly what we expect to accomplish by delaying it, but the best use for this property is probably something that doesn't require a lot of traffic. I don't really buy into the fear tactics that there may be some manufacturing company moving in. It's difficult to get in and out of this area, and with Old Eola Road, I don't see anybody driving semis up and down that to get them out of that subdivision. So my take is that the best use of this is probably for a solar field or some sort of recreational area as we look at it. And, you know, regardless of whether we delay and they come back with some minor tweaks to this, I feel like this needs to be something else.
I got to call point of order here because this is not anything to do with anything that we are talking about today. This is just one Alderman hypothetically making up things to put in an area because he's up here campaigning. And so we've got to get back to the point of order. We've got to get back to the ordinance that we're talking about, and I think we should move forward and call the hold for two weeks. Your opinion is not what we're looking for right now.
So the item before us is do hold this for two weeks. Is there any more discussion on that?
Mayor Protem.
Alderman Babe?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Along with the traffic concerns, the residents brought up some other concerns, and I wanted to bring them up here today. One was the solid fence, the height of the fence. I think it was suggested to be six feet. Based on residents' feedback, if we can make it eight feet, at least eight feet, if that is possible. The other thing that was brought up was the building one and two should not have rooftop decks because- decks because they will be looking into the residents' homes. And also, I had suggested earlier to add a dentum for HOA to maintain the wetlands. So if we can have those things addressed as well as the rest of the things for the next meeting.
Sure. Would you like me to speak on it now?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. So with respect to the fence, we're fully willing to install the fence where our town homes are adjacent to the residence. I believe the city's code restricts a fence height to six feet, so I don't think we could go any higher than that, but we're happy to install that six-foot fence. With respect to the habitable attics that you mentioned, because these town homes have that option for the habitable attics, we would be happy to restrict and have no habitable attics on those two buildings, one and two, that are adjacent to the residences. And with respect to the wetlands, wetlands don't generally need to be maintained per se. It's more so to be preserved and we are seeking to rezone that property as open space and preservation, so we would be preserving the wetlands certainly. And then maintaining our stormwater detention, of course, to make sure it does not inflict with the wetlands.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Messiakos?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you for that data. Your style, this is the second time you've been here before, your style reminds me of someone who was very bright, used to work here, her name was Stephanie Pfeiffer. I never took notes when Steffi spoke because I knew I had to pay more attention to what she was saying. I'm figuring your information you brought today is new and staff has that?
Correct.
All right. Can we ask staff to share that with us as well? We greatly appreciate it. All right, thanks so much.
Brian?
Brian Wackowski, Engineering. I just wanted to ask, you're just looking for confirmation of the information from like DuPage County and the council?
The attorney just gave us a lot of data. She updated us verbally.
On the turning, the turning times and that kind of thing?
Right, exactly. We only have a draft dated in August, I believe.
No problem. Just wanted to make sure I was going to send you the right stuff.
Yeah, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I'm sorry.
Can we get that uploaded to the agenda item?
Okay. Alderman Tolliver?
Just for clarification, there were updates. I was on the train around four and I did see some updates with some of the information, if not all of the information that Caitlin had discussed. And then secondly, just to kind of piggyback off of Alderwoman Bade's point, the questions that I'm referring to that I'm going to send to you do have those concerns in there as well. They came from one of the residents that couldn't be here tonight, so again, it's a little lengthy, but you know, nothing that we're not used to when it comes to this development. So those are addressed in that as well. So just to kind of piggyback off your point.
Thank you.
Okay, again, this motion. Alderman Frankel?
Just one quick thing. We mentioned, you mentioned a six-foot fence. Our ordinance says six-foot fence. Mr. Vansch, does this body have the power to give a variance to make it a higher than a six-foot fence?
Not in this, not as presently set up.
If it was brought to us to get a variance for this, could we vote to have that higher? Is there a way to do it?
I would like sometime to look at that.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure because I think sometimes we can, you know, if the body allows something to happen, you know, we typically can, so I just want to make sure about that. Thanks.
Again, the motion on the table is to hold this for two weeks.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Alderman Bugg?
Briefly, thank you. Ma'am, thank you for your comments tonight. I believe you brought up alternative uses for this property, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if an alderman speaks on that point, he has a right to do that, okay? And for the next five months, if alderman speaks on a point that's brought up by petitioner in any form or fashion, he has a right to do it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the motion to hold for two weeks? If none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bugg?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Twelve yes, zero no.
Motion is approved. We will hold this for two weeks then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read the next item? Twenty-four zero seven zero nine?
Twenty-four zero seven zero nine, a resolution approving a preliminary Platten Plan for Eola Preserve Subdivision located at six twenty North Eola Road.
Is there a motion?
Again, Mayor Protem, are these two related, I think? Do they both need to be held?
I think you can take unanimous consent to hold this for two weeks.
Okay, is there unanimous consent to hold this for two weeks?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please read the next item.
Twenty-four zero seven three zero, a resolution authorizing the execution of a Phase Three Construction Engineering Services contract with H.R. Green Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of one million nine hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred forty-four dollars for the Farnsworth Builder Church roadway widening, resurfacing, and intersection improvements.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderman Frankel. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bugg?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
This motion is adopted. Clerk, please call the next item.
Twenty-four zero seven three nine, a resolution to award a contract to R.W. Dunham Corporation in the bid amount of nineteen million five hundred twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars for the Farnsworth Builder and Church roadway improvements project. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderwoman Garza. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Barrero?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Messiakos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Tolliver?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bugg?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderman Lash?
No.
Alderman Warman?
Yes.
Eleven yes, one no.
This resolution is approved. Clerk, please read the next item on the agenda.
Twenty-four zero seven four one, a resolution authorizing consulting statement of work generative artificial intelligence policy strategy and roadmap from International Data Corporation Research Incorporated. Need him, Massachusetts, for a one-year term not to exceed one hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred seventy dollars. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Smith, second by Alderwoman Garza. Any further discussion?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Alderman Bugg?
I'll wait for staff.
Good evening, Mike Piggy, Chief Information Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Piggy. Just since this kind of was put out there this week, I got contacted by a number of residents, since this is a brand-new field, AI, a number of people in this realm and in this industry. And I know we had this talking session that went back and a number of people were there from the city and various corporations and that. Was there an open invitation to the public or what? And this is what the residents asked, are they going to have an opportunity to have input in some way on this? And if you could just talk a little bit more about that session that you held and the people that were involved in that.
Absolutely. So in June, we held a session, but it was city employees, it was also representatives from the alderman's office, also representatives from state and also education institution. So it was more of a discovery, just to kind of open up the field and talk about the possibilities and what are some of the efficiencies that could be provided. As, if and when this is approved, part of that statement of work is actually to engage with the alderman's office, also within your prospective wards and to gain feedback as well from your residents. Because again, the objective is to create a policy, a strategy, and a roadmap to basically to enhance services for our constituents. So short answer, absolutely, yes.
Okay. And of course, this is a one-year, like you said, laying out the game plan and, I mean, this is going to be a long-term future, but this is our first year getting into it and laying it out.
Absolutely, exploratory, to kind of lay the roadmap out, then we'll come back to city council based on the feedback.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor Protem?
Alderman Messiakos?
Point of clarification, you said you want to engage an alderman so you can hear from the residents. Are you going to engage the residents or are you going to expect the alderman to give you feedback based on what they hear from the residents?
That's going to have to be a discussion between city staff and also the alderman's office in terms of how you would like that engagement to be. So it won't be...
So you're expecting us to control that?
Absolutely, to give feedback on it and say how you would like to have those conversations. Absolutely.
Which committee would that be, you think?
Well, it could be surveys, it could be face-to-face, it could be, you know, website, it could be all of the above. But based on the scope of the statement of work, we'll have to determine that, you know, within the means of the budget.
Do you expect us to be AI experts? So I'm going to speak for myself, to ask to have that conversation with them and bring your feedback.
No, no, no. So we would engage the alderman's office and say, here's the plan, just like we had back in June. It was just an open conversation in terms of the best uses, use case, impacts, and things of that nature, awareness, right? So yourself representing that ward, we would engage you to see how you'd like to have those conversations. But we're not expecting you to speak on it, we're asking you to participate.
We also have a Sustainability and Technology Advisory Committee, right, that we would probably, I would expect to give me some feedback as well. Where are they on that? And I'll be honest with you, I looked at all the agendas of this past year and I didn't see anything regarding AI on the subject matter.
In terms of sustainability?
Sustainability, well, they want to talk to sustainability, there's topics on that, right?
I mean, that can actually be defined as well. I mean, so we haven't kind of went back and defined exactly what that engagement would look like, but based on the feedback, again, we would create that in collaboration.
Because I would see that as an opportunity for the community to come and engage, our advisory committee to come and participate as well, if we're engaging the advisory committee to weigh in on AI as well, right?
Absolutely, and we do, Alderman, actually have the Aurora, the Innovation Technology Commission that we have spoke about it, and we've had people come from the public to actually sit in on those conversations as well. So the commission has been engaged. Also, we had individuals from the Sustainability Board, actually Alex Manila, who also participates on there, so he has been engaged on that as well in terms of sustainability.
Hmm, okay. I'm interested to see how this is going to work out in terms of getting feedback from us, at least from my chair. I wouldn't know what the first thing to ask my residents and...
Well, that's where IDC would come in and they would actually help to kind of lay out what those survey questions would be.
Okay, all right.
Alderman Frankel?
So I would like to piggyback on that. So you're saying that if the alderman's office says, we'd like a survey to go out to the people, write to them and they can ask questions, that would be a way to go.
Absolutely.
We will determine how that vehicle is set up to get the information from them, to them, back and forth, the whole thing, and we'll decide on that and we'll go with that.
That is correct, Alderman.
Not that we have to be, right? So we'll come up with a plan and of getting the information out, back and forth, and then we execute it, right?
Absolutely, one hundred percent.
I just want to clarify, I think we're kind of going down the wrong way with some of these questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Lash?
Just briefly to follow up on Alderman Messiakos's question, the Information and Technology Committee Advisory Board has looked at this or has not looked at this?
They have looked at it.
They've looked at it. And is that a full commission? Do we have all the members appointed or...
We're missing three. There's three positions that are still open.
Thank you.
And we're currently looking to fill the third one, so.
Thank you.
And Mr. Piggy's, has your department thought about the idea of having some type of public meeting throughout the city and inviting residents to attend if the people have any comments or questions or anything?
Yes, absolutely. And actually, I can have Mr. Bimbury also comment on that, but that was one of the original requirements.
Please do. Thank you.
Good evening, Kevin Bimbury with IDC. So that's part of the plan. I think you guys all have the statement of work that we have currently today, so we're going to engage with all of the people within the city as well. So we want to make sure first we have a plan on how to do that. Once we get the plan done, then we're going to execute on the plan. So we want to make sure we get everything at the high level done first and then drill down onto each level. Again, there's three phases. The first phase will be four weeks, the second phase will be eight weeks, the third phase will be six weeks. So once we get everything worked out, then we can start to engage the right people at the right time. And that's really the goal. We want to start first to get the stakeholders within the city and then with your help, and then work around that as well to make sure that everybody is heard, so.
That would be very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Lash?
Just to clarify, I mean, just so the rest of the council knows right, during the last meeting when we discussed this, I think you said that there are no other templates and we would be a pioneering city in this initiative so that this is not a, something that's been tested elsewhere, correct?
I think I mentioned that I didn't know of other cities. I think we have done this within IDC, but I didn't know the cities at the time, so. But you are actually on the cutting edge, which is good. You're actually trying to lead, you're leading into this, and I think if you recall, I mentioned the city of Indianapolis, they're actually going way high at the legislative area and you really don't, in our opinion, don't want to do that. You want to start down here where you're getting gen-AI involved with the city as well. So there's a lot to be learned from this with the city and we're going to be on that journey with you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, will clerk please call the roll.
Yes.
is in the amount of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred, and eighty-seven dollars. This particular quote was processed in due course, and a purchase order was issued, as it was priced on a cooperative, and was less than the fifty-thousand-dollar limit, requiring formal city council approval. So that is why this particular item appears on the report, as mentioned by Mr. Messiakos a few moments ago. The second quote was dated in October, I believe it was October, I don't have it called up, but it was either October 17th or October 27th. Once this quote was witnessed, and we ascertained that it would take us over the fifty-thousand-dollar limit for requiring council approval, we did freeze the action at that time. That was the genesis for Legislaw Number twenty-four, zero seven, nine, seven, to be, to come before you, to be approved. It was one project to one vendor in an amount greater than fifty-thousand dollars in total. So that's why it appears on the report, and that's why the Legislaw item came forth at this particular time. Are there any questions in that regard? Okay, thank you. Enclosed are the Treasurers' Reports for the Third Quarter of 2024. All three of the months for the Third Quarter are included. I'd like to focus and give comments related mainly to the September 30th report. It is the most recent, it is the most relevant to the conversation. We have now received essentially all of the property tax distributions from the four counties. I believe that the numbers show that we've received about ninety-six percent of the property taxes that we had levied. There was a small installment that came through during the month of October, but by and large, the property taxes have now been received for the year. Our trends for financial performance are still positive at September 30th. Our general fund is showing approximately one hundred and eighty-three million, five-hundred thousand dollars in revenues, approximately one hundred and sixty-nine million, nine-hundred thousand in expenditures, resulting in a thirteen million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus at September 30th of 2024. Our revenues are running slightly above budget, they are running approximately seventy-nine percent. And when you take into account the accrual activity that has occurred in the beginning of the year, recording some of those 2023 revenues back into 2023, we should finish the year ahead of budget in total at December 31st. We have seen positive performance, again, with our income taxes, our license and permit revenues, our charges for services, as well as our food and beverage tax, and interest income. Currently, our expenditures are running approximately seventy-two percent of budget, slightly under budget for the year, and they are trending a little bit under budget at this point in time. Those were the formal remarks that I had for the Treasurers' Report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, just in case I need to do this, as Mayor Protem, I acknowledged receipt of the July, 2024, August, 2024, and September, 2024 Treasurers' Report. Are there any questions, Mr. Minnick?
Mayor Protem, I don't have a question, I just have an additional comment.
Messiakos?
Thank you. I was quite surprised to see that game time item, line item, in the Treasurers' Report when I was going through the docket. But nonetheless, regardless, it was a great catch by your team not to move forward with it, because if you had moved forward with it, and were voting on this other legislative piece as well earlier today, it could be misconstrued as or a stringing, which is not allowed in terms of contracts, so I appreciate that clarification.